Good evening. My name is Anthony Small. We have a planning board meeting tonight. 6:31 PM. We have a forum present. The first order of business are the minutes from the meeting of September 6th. Everybody receive something over the computer. You also have a copy in front of you. If you haven't read it, I'll give you a minute. And then I'll need a motion to accept them or amend them.
Don't move.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes from November 6th is presented. It was second. Any discussion on the whole thing? Not seeing any hands raised. I'm assuming there's no discussion on any minutes. A motion to, excuse me, a decision to take the 30 minutes as presented.
Does this go off automatically?
Nope, it doesn't go on automatically. But if it's not, the people on the screen.
This little thing will light up on the line.
Oh, yeah, thank you. All right, I need a decision on the minutes to accept them as presented. Anybody in opposition? No? So cool. Thank you. The purpose of the meeting is to review, this is the site plan review of a project proposed for 70 Spring Street. It's an apartment complex, 36 units. Actually, we're here tonight to hear a presentation from the applicant and is Jason coming? Oh, I see, thank you. From the applicant and another individual from Pay, Penquess Development District, if I'm getting that.
I'm with Carpenter Associates, engineer.
All right, thank you.
I'm the technical guy.
And can I ask, was that being picked up, that Randy responded? He had to come up to the mic.
It's not, I was wondering. It would be him. Randy Bragg, Carpenter Associates, and I'm here to help Jason present the decision.
All right, thank you.
Are you ready for me?
That's Jason Burry.
Yeah, Jason, please go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I apologize, I can't be there in person tonight, but naturally, I think the next step in this process will be a formal public hearing and myself and Randy and others will be there for that. But if I may, I'll walk you through a very quick introduction to our intent with the property, walk through our plans for the building. I've got Randy there in person. He can certainly speak to more technical aspects as it relates to infrastructure design and some other more detailed questions that may come up as a part of your discussion. But I'll go ahead and share my screen and then walk you through a presentation that closely resembles the one that I used for the council the other night. So bear with me one second here. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen now with the presentation?
Yeah, it's showing up the text, that is.
Okay, fantastic, yes. All right. So I'll give a quick overview of Penquess itself, just because I think it's important context as to, you know, talk about why we're proposing to build affordable housing and then we'll talk about the building and I'll show you some pictures and some plans of what we intend to do. So as an organization, Penquess has been around for over 55 years. We have during that time focused primarily on eliminating, addressing and eliminating the causes of poverty. And so we do that through a variety of programs and services. Some of the more popular or well-known ones are heating assistance, home repair, Head Start in childcare, transportation, of course, affordable housing, assisted living, and I think a total of 70 other programs. On any given day, we are serving approximately 6,000 individuals, unique individuals in that day for through a variety of those programs. And as it relates specifically to affordable housing, between what we have currently under our ownership and control, including what we're in the process of acquiring in the market, and then also what we're in the process of developing, we have approximately 600 affordable rental housing units, and that includes a mix of family properties and what we call older adult properties, or those that are 55 and older. So a quick overview of our proposed building. This actually is, is our intent is that this building will be version 3.0 of a structure that where we focus as a base set of plans on, and then we tweak it slightly and take from the lessons learned that we've used or that we've established over prior iterations. And so we've built two of these properties in Bangor. We have a third that will break ground in on the spring and the the building is approximately just under 40,000 square feet with a variety of community rooms. While all one-bedroom apartments in the proposed 36 units that we're speaking of. Each unit will have its own bathroom, full kitchen range somewhere in the 700 ballpark square foot range and then have onsite laundry, additional sort of storage in the basement and a variety of other programs and features within the building. This is a Google image of the lot itself. There's the existing brick building here on the left that was the former Rustic Avenue School.
Can I interrupt you for a moment? Your slides are not advancing on the screen. Wondering if they're going forward on your computer.
Oh, they are. Interesting. What image do you see now?
Penquess overview.
Oh, interesting. That is so weird. Okay.
Are you on the full screen? View? Hey, there we go.
Okay, okay. So you have, you have this screen here. Okay, sorry, I have, I have three images. I, sorry, sorry about that. I have three screens and for some reason they weren't showing the correct one. Okay. All right. So I apologize. Let me let me back up for context. So now you see a quick building overview. Slide. Okay, sorry about that. So quickly to rehash, just so everyone has it right there, 36 one-bedroom units in the three-story building. The building will have not only several community rooms or larger sort of common space, you know, allowing residents to either host a birthday party, a quilting group, or what have you, as well as extra onsite storage. There'll be laundry, several laundry room on each floor, as well as each unit will have its own full kitchen and bathroom and be about 700 square feet in total. And then one thing I forgot to mention in the last screen, something that we traditionally tried to do at every property that we develop would be to include gardening space for the tenants, as well as having programming and provide supports for tenants to allow, you know, to be able to have that as a, an activity while they, while they live there. Okay, so now hopefully you all can see the overview or a Google image of the lot itself. So the building that is currently on the lot, the brick building that is the former Rustic Avenue School. Our intent is to repurpose and redevelop part of that building into a mixed-use property. We haven't spent a lot of time on that just yet, only because our priority is developing the sort of undisturbed, the vacant part of the lot, the grassed area first, as that's, that's our priority, given that we've got funding and sort of the stars aligning as it relates to the need for that, for that housing. So I'll quickly though, we'll delve into the site plan itself and I'll pull up that image in a, in a moment, especially if to have Randy come up and talk a little bit more about the technical aspects that are there. But as I was referring to earlier, we've, we've built this building before essentially. And so this is the very first building that we've built. Just now, are we three years ago? And as you can see, we've, we've, we intentionally take steps to avoid building just a simple box. And so we incur sort of extra cost and time and effort to break up the facade a little bit, while still being mindful of the need to be somewhat efficient with the sort of dollars that we have available to be able to build this type of facility. But with, with the, the reason why we have to build up multiple floors. And in doing so though, we certainly provide for an elevator, especially with this population, we wouldn't expect them to be, to be lugging groceries or boxes or things up to their, to their homes and on the third, second or third floors. But the, the one thing that I want to mention as a part of, of this discussion today is that our intent is that the, the roof structure will be slightly different. Assuming and taking a leap of faith that the city, the town council will adopt and approve the, the set of changes that the planning board has recommended. We might, we will be going to a flat roof structure for this. So the, the, this pitch here and then some of this, the architectural feature there will change slightly in order to, to maintain or stay under that, what is the proposed 40-foot limit. In doing so, it also frees us up a little bit as we're exploring new mechanical and electrical type of services in the building, in particular utilizing heat pumps for not only heating, of course, but cooling and just generally moving more towards a direction of thinking long-term about the the heating and mechanical systems that we put into the building. The interior, like I said, has a lobby space and other sort of social areas, but we intend to provide a very warm and inviting space, so that way tenants can gather, meet their neighbors and also have others visiting as well. This is a very, just one image of the, a typical unit. This is an older image and I really should be updating it, but there, there is intent to have a stove there. We took this image. It was while we were still wrestling with suppliers during the pandemic to get the 40 stoves that we had ordered to arrive on time. But the, the design behind the, the units are, that there's obviously a common, a kitchen area, ample space to be able to make your own meals, as well as a small nook for dining and then sort of combined living space that has ample seating for couches and a TV and those kinds of things. To your left, I'll show you a photo of the shower. But there's the full bathroom to the left and in this case, around the corner is a, the, the separate bedroom with a, you know, fully enclosed door there. I don't have a picture of that, but you, you get the sort of general, the concept there. Next, I wanted to show you one shower option and we do a mix within the building to provide needs of the varying population that we serve. But we, although, so we typically though, go well above and beyond the minimum state standard for accessible units when we develop older adult housing. And the intent behind that is that we, we encourage individuals that are living with us that are older adults to stay for as long as possible, right? We want to, we want to encourage them to be able to live independently for as long as they're able. And so in doing so, we provide a couple of options in terms of either showers or tub, like roll-in shower options or tubs with adequate grab bars and accessibility features to ensure that individuals are able to age in place, but do so safely, be able to get in and out of the tub and or around, you know, using the toilet in those areas, because we find that those are the, the biggest instance where slips and falls and other injuries can happen. And so we want to avoid that, obviously, to the extent possible. And then lastly, Randy will speak a little bit more about this, but here is an image of nighttime of the two buildings that we've recently built. And the reason why I'm showing this image is in part to talk a little bit more of the pains that we take to be, you know, mindful, excuse me, of the neighborhood that we develop in and be intentional about not wanting to have any adverse impacts on our neighbors. And so in particular, this is, the, the intent here is to show the lighting package that we choose. So we, we focus on directing the lights down is sort of obviously where they're intended versus either a football stadium or parking lot concept where it's just trying to broadcast a very wide and have more of a flood mentality here. As you can see, as you sort of quickly go past the lot line, the the sort of spillover or the, the light pollution, so to speak, you know, dies off pretty quickly. And that's intentional. And one thing that I'll note, and you'll see in the plans here, the intent would be not to have any of this lighting on the backside of the property, which is the, the side that would butt the residential units. So I'm going to close that. My hope is that now you all can see our proposed site plan. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. So Randy, feel free to chime in at any time. I'll give a very brief overview perhaps of some of the features and sort of the layout of the property, but I think it may be helpful for you to talk a little bit more about utilities and those kinds of things that, that you and your team have taken a fair amount of time to design in com- in combination with the water district and and others as well in the town. But as you can see here, the sort of funny shaped rectangle box here is where the proposed building, excuse me, would be on that lot. You can see to the left, the brick building that currently exists. Again, our intent would be to redevelop that ideally at the same time in terms of, you know, having a disturbance to the neighborhood and contractor vehicles and those kinds of things at one time. However, we, we haven't turned our attention just yet to the internal sort of layout and design of that yet. But once we get past the process for the big, the sort of big building that we're proposing, then we'll, we'll turn our attention to that as we're waiting springtime construction start. But the, the plan here is that we've got 36 units, but certainly 30 38 spaces, parking spaces in total. We find with this property that their parking is traditionally well underutilized. But our intent, though otherwise, there is a large existing parking space in this area over here and our plan will be that not only will for every one-bedroom unit, every tenant will technically have a space available to them. But should there be an over or influx of visitors, there'll be ample parking in, in this space over here, the existing parking with the brick building, allowing them to be able to, visitors still to come, come and go as, as needed. In designing the, the building, obviously we're constrained sort of north and south, east and west, but we've got adequate turning here, turning radius for the fire truck or ambulance service. And we've also been thoughtful about bringing in fire hydrant service as well as some other design elements, just to ensure that we're not having some benefit to the neighborhood and the surrounding area, but being somewhat self-sufficient and reliant on, on those things versus, you know, winging a prayer when it comes to, to emergency response and some of those other things. You can see we've, we've intended for and planned to have a buffer zone between the building itself and the adjoining or the neighboring budding lots. That will provide through, you know, pretty thick and dense vegetation inadequate buffer, we feel that, that at least it meets the minimum, certainly as prescribed in, in the zoning, but probably would exceed it as well. I'm going to take a drink of water. Randy, is there anything in particular that you want to highlight as a part of this design?
No, you're doing pretty good. One thing I do want to point out is to the door closest to Spring Street, off the page. In the grass strip there, right now, if you've been by that property, you'll know there's about 40 feet of pavement. That's going to be, we're going to put a large grass buffer there to separate the traffic from the parking lot. Let's speed back or not. But so that's one thing at the top as well. That's where all of the utilities are for the project. We've worked with staff, steward department, main water, talked to their engineer several times. We have proposed, based on the water folks, Marcus Smith, who does your engineering for you. He proposed a change from one of the plans that you had earlier to go to a six-inch water service for now, for sprinkler only, and then a two-inch domestic. So those are both have shut off, have a right away. Of course, the final design will dictate exactly all of those sizes of the whole question. They're good. Based on our experience, one other thing along, along the eastern boundary, along the neighbors, there will be that fence, there will be the plantings and that grass strip as well. But we've also, you'll notice, if you look closely, putting some catch basins there to make sure there's no chance of runoff or any water heading towards them, or the consequences of that. It's a very flat site. So we want to make sure we can capture and take away any runoff water right away before, certainly before it goes to the front of the parking lot. Also, the stormwater design for this building, there is about a five, ten-foot strip against the building that will act as the drip edge. That's an underground soil filter. There's some details in here. But basically what that does is catch any rainwater on the building, catches it, hopefully most of it at the building, takes it underground filters, it treats it, cools it off, and then discharges it at the correct rate to your existing system. Your existing stormwater is pretty robust. I believe it's an 18-inch storm rain out there, so it can go on all kinds of runoff water. The electrical will, will coordinate with the, the utility there. They'll dictate where the exact location of the drop hole goes, but we'll bring overhead to a drop hole. And then our plan is to go underground to a pad mount transformer. It's a pretty big project, so we need a pad mount transformer. And that's in the upper right-hand corner there with a T on it. We'll protect that with some ballers. And then from there, we'll bring the big, the big wires into the building underground. So nothing really overhead there. Jason showed a good picture of the nighttime lighting. So the lighting on the building, most of the lighting here is on the building. So the intent there is to safely light the sidewalk. We really need to do that, propose, make sure that's safe. Most of the parking spaces along that main entrance are the front of the building. The west side are, almost all of them are handicapped and accessible. That means they're all less than 2%. So that's a good thing for this proposed population as well. You mentioned to the south, the planted area. You see kind of the hatch area with the bubble around it. Kind of tucked behind the dumpsters. So the dumpsters will be at the end of the property, kind of campewalks with the fence and the gate. That'll allow the truck to come in, pick up, back out, and go away. And that's the same turnaround that any larger vehicles could use as well to do that, that movement. Jason mentioned the ability for spillover parking in the upper left on the existing property. That's a big involved in there, a large paved area already. Could easily handle 20, 25 extra vehicles in that space as it is now. The existing building has parking, a lot of folks park against that building currently and will be able to do so with this plan. You'll notice our access road, the hatched pattern, regarded pattern is several feet, about 30 feet off the building. So plenty of space to pull in there. People can dig into the building, not parallel. So you'll be able to pull in at 90-degree angle. The other plan is to handle some snow removals a concern always with these projects. So when we have, what is not called away, we have a large, curved space in the lower left. That's grass area that we have the ability to put some snow there. We need to, we can't get it all the way. We have a catch basin near the dumpster as well. Make sure we catch that little runoff. We don't want any more running to the south either. We would like to run through where I used, I remember it used to be, but I believe it's been turned back over to the property owners. Unfortunately. It does have a basement that's mostly stored. That's where all the mechanicals and electrical equipment will go, water service. And then three floors that will have an elevator. Three stairwell towers as well. And as Jason mentioned, because of the building height restriction here, we're going to be going to a flat roof scenario unless you'd like us to go to a pitch roof. So we'll, we will work, work the architect to kind of campewallage that flat roof too. We'll try to put some kind of Mansford or some, Mansfords, float roof on the edges. It kind of campewallage any mechanical equipment we have to put on the roof. Normally we're going, yeah, in space. Other than that, I'm pretty straightforward. Type of stuff. But I, I'm here to answer any questions or technical questions you might have about the project. Certainly, our intent was to, with the application was to address all of your lineups one by one. The staff came back with a couple of sets of comments that we tried to address. I think we've got them all, I think we're obviously there is, should be, there's certainly another process we have to go through with the town. We'd have to go through a design process and then we'll be a building permit required, and then there will be a chance to go and review again. We are under pretty tight scrutiny with main housing with that review and all reviews that we have to, for the funding agencies, but still the town has some input for species of trees or the colors and some of those things, you know, where it might
Randy, Tony, you mentioned, or Jason mentioned, both you mentioned about the additional parking. And would that be at the north end of the property?
It would be to the northwest.
No, okay.
It would be in what I would consider in front of, I'll call it the old school, I apologize.
Yeah.
I was the cabinet school.
Yeah.
I think it's used for conference center now, is what the sign says. Yeah. It's a very large area. So to the upper right, where we have some of our 38 parking spaces, that holds comfortably 18. So you can see the spot to the left is larger than that. We figure we can get upwards of 25 extra if we need to. Right. Based, based on the use of the project, like Jason said, we don't expect all of those parking spaces to be full. But certainly there is a chance that for somebody to have a couple of visitors and it's nice to have another block of car.
I, I agree. And I think we will need to anticipate more visitors than two for a 36-unit complex. You mentioned about the flat roof and that was by design, if you will, because of the height requirements. We want to take anything that's sound. Right now it's 30 feet. We want to take anything in this town, right now, it's thirty feet. But the town council is considering changes that were proposed in you. And it's proposed that it go to forty feet, but we'll see where that goes. But having that flat roof allows that forty foot limitation to be workable for this for this complex.
The floor to floor height is approximately eleven or twelve feet, so multiply that by three, you're about thirty-six. Thirty-three to thirty-six, we'd like to put a couple of feet up for a pair of it. In case anybody's out there, they don't just go walking up the hill for those, that'll hide some of the things that will centrally locate. So if this building ends up with, say, heat pump, we have to put condensers somewhere. Be too bad to kind of see those all over the place, so we can hide them in the roof, or somebody couldn't really see them, that's that's our intent.
You also, well, speaking with that flat roof. Are you able to discuss tonight how runoff from that roof system, is it gonna just drip off the edge, is it gonna be?
Nope, the intent, the intent for this roof is to catch it in roof drains. So we have chases internal to the wall plane, that we can chase roof drains down into the basement area, take them into that filter drain and then out. So not over the edges, no scuppers, no, none of those type of things.
All right.
Proposed at this time.
Well, maybe you said that and I missed it.
I did not. I think we mentioned it in the other one.
Yeah, well, the book has changed from what I first wrote it. What I'd like to do is, are you finished, Randy?
I am.
Question from planning board members concerning the project. The presentation itself, if some of you had the packet contracted tonight, had a chance to review things. The plot plans in that initial document represents the project as it is proposed. And they are accurate, correct me if I'm wrong. But the references in the general notes made reference to another community that we asked to have addressed.
I think those were in the second set of comments that we received from the town, those have been clarified. So maybe not everybody got the updates that we brought, I think, ten copies here. So I apologize for that, but we did take out references to Bangor, we do realize we're in Millinock here.
That that the plot plan is this one that we received some days ago.
This one is dated ten fourteen, it does, hopefully does not reference that. But again, if if there is such a, I'll consider that an embarrassing typo, we can certainly clarify that before final approval.
Well, I'm not here to quite do a brief, and what I am is to to make sure that the references are appropriate for the community. And only address what the town is offering for services. I know they would reference in the original plans for natural gas, which we do not have.
That abouts the, your property abouts that, that.
And so we we asked, when we went out, we heard about the building height restriction, we went out obviously to measure the pool. And we made it mature, so it won't exceed your ordinance today. The church is far above forty now, and the steeple certainly over eighty. So certainly, there's some exception for those type of things. But again, we didn't feel like we were wildly too much higher than the existing school, we are slightly higher. But but again, that's a pretty tall building out there, I'm pretty sure you'll find that it's over thirty, and always has been, but.
I appreciate you and the tank was making that change because of the height limitations. But the church and the school were here before the ordinance was adopted in ninety-two, and so I'll be keeping that with grandfathers. But that is a valid point. Are there any other comments that planning board members wish to make concerning the the project? Let me just briefly mention, and you can address it, Randy, recent setback requirements. I don't want to go over the boilerplate stuff, that we will, but I don't want to go over that and make this more of a document. You know, bigger discussion. But essentially, the setbacks in the neighborhood commercial zone, where this facility is to be constructed. Have been met and represented appropriately, the plot plans that were submitted. Can I make mention the one thing? In the new revised document, it shows the sprinkler system, water entry as six inches?
The sprinkler system inside is six inches.
And then the domestic water is four inches.
Oh, I I figured, I might have said two.
I picked up on that, but.
Great, until we do the final design. It may be as small as two, no larger than four. I believe the maximum peak flow that we're estimating for this property is around sixty to eighty gallons a minute. Which is well within the capacity of your system out there. We even checked with Marcus at Main Water about the service for the sewer, for the. In case there's a fire, it's based on twelve head calculation, which I want to worry about that, but it's about. With that and the board demand from a nearby hydrant, we did put one of those to request at the entrance. We have about seven or eight hundred gallons a minute capacity. This in Morse, in Bangor, other requirement in the final design was about five, eight, five hundred, six hundred. Now, we do need to verify with Marcus in the main role when we do final design, we had added a pressure. But again, we don't, just need a pump to deal with that.
All right, you're you're dealing with what I was gonna ask questions about, and maybe the chief might have questions in this regard. But essentially, Marcus's comments or his email message indicated that. The size of the unit, the domestic and the sprinkler systems, the service to building. I guess we're adequate in size, but that there's enough power behind it to really. Could not provide the water that's really intended to be provided to the sprinkler system and and the facility. That's been addressed.
We've sent preliminary numbers to Marcus, and his intention was to put it into a model, evidently they have a hydraulic model of your entire system. So I thought it would be an easy task for him to say, we want to draw six hundred gallons a minute off this in case there's a fire. What does it do for the rest of the system? When I spoke with him the very first time, he stated something to the effect of the static pressure in that area was seventy-two. And that's based seventy-two PSI, I'm sorry. We're allowed in a fire to go as low as twenty, and probably the cheaper the lower to fire out. Because like I said, in that space on hydrant that's often obscured just above Spring Street. Not too far away, less than probably five hundred feet away, there's also another hydrant on, forgive me, cottage is it right onto the east side?
That's Congress.
Congress, I beg your pardon, about two houses down between there, there's a hydrant about in this position here. Not too far away, right in front of my house, right in front of your house, right, okay, yeah, okay, and then the other one's about here. Graphically, so there is a continued loop around the entire block, there's no gaps in it. Thirdly, the the water main to the south is twelve inch, and I believe the rest of the loop is either six or eight, I can't remember. It's totally looped, so we shouldn't have too much of a problem with any dead ends or anything like that.
So.
So so we can basically draw water from different directions, is what I'm trying to say, you know, we're not having to draw all the water from one spot, so.
All right, as far as a larger diameter water pipe, that'd be up Congress, and then that would be Kataden.
We're not proposing any charges to the size of pipe there, if the friction loss is too much on our property. We're prepared to upsize this property, smaller the pipe, the more head loss, the more friction we burn off, that we can't afford. So we make this pipe bigger, for instance, the head loss per foot on a six inch pipe, at that kind of flow, is about three feet. And if I go to eight inches, it goes to point seven one. So one step size up in pipe gives me much, much less friction loss. But I, again, that that's certainly as my job as the engineer before it goes to design, we build it with Jason, we'll have to bet that out, make sure that's. That we we can't afford not to have that work, that's gonna be tested by a lot of folks. But it looks like on the on the preliminary, on the planning stage, that you're looking pretty good.
Does the fire marshal have input into those?
Fire marshal will review the 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 application that we submit. So there'll be three applications, at first, one will be for barrier free, AK compliance. One will be for plans review, and one will be some, as I think they call it, the impact fees, I'm not sure where that money goes, but anyway. But and then there will be a form permit that will be required by the contractor that will actually install, and so that's the permit that will be reviewed. Technically by Jerry Leach, the state engineer, that makes sure all the hydrology's work. So at that point, we will hope to have already had all the hybrid flow test data already taken care of. We've already asked Marcus for that, asked him what else he needs, but we haven't, just haven't heard from him yet. But again, there there, that's down the road quite a ways, but we we need, we'll probably end up doing that step a little sooner. Because if for whatever reason, and I don't think it will, we have to put in a big tank because we don't have enough flow, or we don't have enough pressure, we need a big pump. Jason's gonna wanna know that right away, because that will impact his ability to do the project.
As far as cost.
As far as cost, because replacing, you know, a couple thousand feet or eight inches warming in the road is very expensive, very. I was a little surprised to see six inch mains in the in the roads. But but anyway, that's what it is.
As far as what you're describing here, is there anything that? Is gonna actually cut this project off at the knees, if you will? Do you anticipate something, or is this, what you've discussed thus far, something that can be accommodated?
Nothing, I mean, certainly it'll be Jason's decision if we have to do something to supplement the fire flows. We think it's not going to happen based on what we know now, but that'll that'll be just a money issue, but technically, there's not, we we can solve that. And we've done it before on other projects. So in cases where you're very rural, and let's say you just have a well, you don't even have water systems. We end up putting a big tank in the ground, we filled up with a tanker truck one time, and then after every fire or every test, we fill that up. Then we put a big booster pump on it and supply the thirty minutes or two hours of flow that we needed, two or three hundred gallons a minute.
What you're describing there, is that something that is an emergency occurrence? Or it's something that's ongoing operations, that's the way it's gonna have to work?
We're hoping it never ever has to be used.
All right.
Definitely emergency.
All right.
So it's a, you know, it's a lot of money to spend for that just in case, but but it's it's a necessary thing that we have to do, it's a, it's a requirement.
I don't want to put you on the spot there, Tom, do you have any questions related to what you heard tonight?
No, I I have met with them a couple of times, and I've talked to Marcus a few times already on this project. No, they answered everything that I had a concern.
So one of the things that you can use some leverage for me to help us out a little bit is to, we've asked Marcus what he wants for procedures. But we assume he's gonna want us to calibrate his model, he's gonna want some updated flows. So whenever those hydrants are to be flushed, or if we want to flush them this season, we can get somebody like EK Prescott coming to do the test for us.
That's their responsibility.
That is Marcus's responsibility.
They're in, they're actually in the process of flushing right now.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think, I have the newest hydrant data, I think it was twenty-one, was the last time they.
Okay, that's pretty recent, so that's pretty good.
They've got all of that, that's it, that's all their responsibility.
So if you if you would just relinquish that, I would check them out. Okay, thank you, sir.
When when information of that comes forward, share it with the board.
Sure.
As we put a record together for the files downstairs, we'll all be different people in years to come. And if information isn't gathered.
Well, certainly this, that, any one of these issues has a chance to be reopened. So then we're just kind of preliminary planning, we're gonna hopefully get final approval planning, and then there's a design phase. So again, design phase is gonna have a bunch more tighter technique on making sure stuff works. So this is like, yeah, we can make it work, we don't know exactly how yet, every little detail. In our case, we we have an advantage, because this is like our third or fourth one with the building pieces. Infrastructure is a little different sometimes every time, so, but again, we're we're confident we've dealt with all of these issues in the past on other projects, so.
This this design meeting and other meetings in general, like you said, this goes forward. Are they gonna occur here in town?
They traditionally do not, I mean, unless unless the staff or the code enforcement officer, which is to. Sometimes we'll offer, when we submit for a building permit, you know, usually that's the contractor. But we'll we'll offer to come in and walk through the code enforcement officer with that step by step. By that time, we've had a whole bunch of people review the plans for us, a bunch of other engineers and things. So we're pretty confident that what we've done is gonna, you know, work pretty good.
Again.
Otherwise, Jason's gonna be mad at us all, so.
Well, that the information that gets transferred from consultants and other individuals. Gets deposited in the file in this in this town will be important, that essentially the data are not lost.
Yeah, so so the building permit, you'll get a complete set of specifications showing everything and a complete set of drawings. You you only see five or six drawings as part of the planning, the total sheet will be like sixty or seventy. I don't know, I can't remember what more, but it's a big set. It has all the details of our site, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, IT, wifi, if it has all of that. All the finishes, so.
All right, thank you, I'm monopolizing the microphone, others on the planning board wishing to ask questions?
Tony, I'll play. Just for discussion, though, you may not have the answer, maybe somebody else has input for the discussion. But it's not clear to me what the Ustic Avenue. That's a, a right away from the town own, that's the event, I was wondering how how that is handled by the town, by the, by your dogs.
We we have assumed, and we think this is correct, and the town can back us up, that that is not a big town road. It is abandoned, so therefore, the properties that we show from the survey, split it down the middle. Half goes to this owner, the other half goes to this owner. So at this point, we're assuming we do not have the right to take utilities or drive through that with our driveway. At this point, so that's our understanding, and that's how we're treating it right now for us. It doesn't, we don't need it for that access for what we're doing. And I think it works better for this property too, not having a bunch of traffic going back and forth with people parking on both sides pretty close. So that's my opinion, but everybody else may disagree. There's not a lot of traffic in Millinock, so I would suspect folks would be racing it back and forth on this road if it were on. Kind of a cop cop out answer, but I I don't, to answer your question directly, we're not treating it as a as a road. We're treating it as it has been turned over to the property owners to the left and the right, to the east and to the west.
There there might be increased traffic. Excuse me, there might be increased traffic in years to come, but when the mill was here, we didn't have to worry about traffic, it was always here. But well, we'll see what the future brings. There are other questions, questions from other planning board members. Let me follow up on something, you mentioned about. Let me follow up on something. You mentioned about the uh, the uh, email message received from uh, uh, Marcus uh, NIP. N I P P. Uh, again, when that information, uh, any information comes in relative to uh. Hydraulic pressures, things of that nature, uh, it needs to be uh, made available to the, through the code enforcement officer, but it needs to be made available to the town. All right, thank you. Uh, can I make mention about a couple of things that I sent to Mr. Bird in uh, the end of October? The apartment complex is gonna be thirty-six units. Originally it was thirty-eight, but it's thirty-six units. And uh, there was concern because it was only thirty-six, actually thirty-eight parking places. And uh, there was gonna be uh, is concern about ample parking off street. And uh, when I discussed recently uh, this matter with Mr. Bird, it was indicated that the uh, unit. Unit, the complex would be designated as one vehicle per apartment. Uh, if that's the case, we'd like something in writing from uh, whomever, Hank Wissler. That something can go into our file indicating the uh, the uh, parking arrangements for the complex so that. Things are actually in black and white. Sure. All right, thank you. Uh, one other thing, uh.
So at the bottom of the sheet, we do say, I assume it's in the sheet that the forward sign at some point. Um, maximum number of units is thirty-six proposed parking, one per unit plus visitor at thirty-eight. You may choose to do something about that, but we do explicitly say how many we're gonna keep there. And once you've signed the sheet with your signature block at some point, um, obligated to go for this plan unless we come back and ask for a change, so.
All right. And it was made mention earlier uh, about uh, additional parking at the north end of the uh. Uh, property northwest end of the property.
Yes.
Uh, is that documented? Uh, that? The uh.
Um, the uh, the, I believe the uh, report, the application actually states that we don't have a bubble here and say spill over parking, but we certainly could add that to the plan if that. Makes it pretty more comfortable. Um.
Uh, again, uh, it needs to be, or should be documented, uh, something in writing that we have in the plan and the plans in folder. Uh, that uh, is maintained by the town so that uh, again, the players change, things get forgotten. All right, thank you. Uh, one other thing that I talked about in our message to Mr. Bird was the uh. But uh, evidence of financial capacity to uh, undertake this project. And I won't go into the ins and outs that were discussed, but essentially uh, it was made mention that the uh. Uh, the project is gonna be uh, funded through uh, long-term debt. Uh, there's gonna be uh. Uh, tax credits and rents. And I was uh, asking Mr. Bird. There must be something in writing uh, for these sources to be referenced as uh, financial capacity to, you know. Carry the project through to completion. Uh. Something that can be, again, made part of the record, written record for this, that shows the project is gonna cost X amount. And that the sources of uh, financing, even though they're itemized as their classification. There's, there's nothing definitive. And I, I asked uh, Mr. Bird about getting something uh, that we can have for the, for the files. I won't go into it because it was not involved, but it, it gets a little discombobulated talking about it. I understand that.
Certainly securing the funds for a project of this magnitude is complicated. Um. But essentially there's a whole, and I'll let Jason speak to this much more eloquently than I, but uh, essentially by the time approvals are met. There's a whole list of scrutiny that uh, they have to go through, make sure all the funding is in place. I, I don't know if there's a specific document or procedure or, or uh, program that would help you understand that better or not, but. I'll let Jason maybe fill that in a little better.
Sure, thank you. Uh, yeah, in our, our conversation earlier today, I assured the chair that um. I'll, I'll work on a essentially a document memorializing uh, without uh, uh, sort of formal commitment certainly, but uh, securing. Um, expressing sort of serious interest and um, viability uh, from main housing who will be our primary funder. Uh, they're also, at the same time, uh, they have, uh, essentially they're, they're the arbiters of the tax credits that we use. So they're intimately familiar with every single layer of funding. So um, I'm, I'm confident that we'll be able to satisfy uh, that requirement.
I, I'm not questioning the uh, uh, I wouldn't say integrity, but the organization. Uh, you're not an unknown entity, but again, documentation so that in the future, someone can reference something in the files that. If we just speak about it and it's not written somewhere, it's lost. All right, thank you.
Certain, no, and I, I think the request is, is very reasonable. So yeah, we're happy, we're happy to accommodate.
Uh, again, any questions from uh, planning board members?
Yeah, okay. Yes, I'm.
Concerned about the impact on the, uh, we're talking about. Older adult properties, is that correct? Jason, can you guess that?
I, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't quite hear.
Uh, these are gonna, going to be older adult properties, is that? Is that written in stone? I wonder, I wonder how you, you know, in this city of uh. In this day and age where, you know, it's hard to discriminate, so against some, some people by especially by age.
Sure.
I'm wondering if um, if this, is, is there actually an age limit on these properties? And if so. How's, how's that apply?
Sure, then that's a very good question. So um, as developers, we have um, more, especially more working with uh, and this is nationally, but in particular with main housing. We have sort of one of two directions that we head. Uh, we can either develop uh, what's called multi-family housing. And those are traditionally two and three bedroom apartment rent, uh, apartment homes, right? Um, or we can do, in, within their programmatic rules, they have very strict um, minimum standards for how many two bedrooms, how many three bedrooms, all that kind of stuff. Or we can essentially take another avenue, which would be to develop for um, we used to be called seniors, but what we try to call older adults. Um, we then have a, the ability, when going that route, to choose either the, the uh, youngest age at, at uh, sixty-two or at fifty-five. We overwhelmingly, uh, we have a couple of older properties where we chose sixty-two, but we predominantly choose fifty-five and older. Because uh, traditionally, when we build these properties, um, they're independent living. And having that age range matters because while we have uh, twenty-four, seven emergency coverage, we have fantastic uh, property management. Uh, contractors and teams and, and we're very, uh, very choosy and very selective who we have help um, maintain and manage the property for us. They often do go above beyond, will help a tenant, you know, lug in groceries and those kinds of things, but um. Traditionally, we, we don't provide, um, you know, that sort of conscientious type service. And so the, in, the individuals living there would need to either rely on their neighbors um, to clean off their car, you know, clean off the snow off the car, do those kinds of things. Um, or a family member or what have you, right? So um, having that, that diversity in the age range allows for um, just a better mix of individuals that, you know. As they're building their sense of community and getting to know their neighbors, they can, you know, lend a hand as needed. Um, one other thing that we typically um, or have in that definition are also individuals that are um, disabled. And so that's part of the reason why we um, do focus on um. Uh, providing a, uh, accessibility features and other things, in part because it's really hard to retrofit. Um, you know, nineteen thirties, nineteen forties uh, home, two-bedroom home, you know, two-story home. Um, instead, we can, we can try to accommodate those individuals here as best as possible because not every, you know, property town needs to have an elevator, right? But you know, ours, if we're going to three floors, certainly should.
All right, thank you, Jason. Uh, that answered your question, Tom.
That does answer my question. Well, I have another. Again, about the community, uh, my granddaughter goes to that school for dancing class and I'm wondering if you're taking that into consideration. Uh, there's a lot of traffic around that building, the way it's handled today. And just wondering. If you're starting construction in, say, the spring, if you're taking this into consideration.
Yeah, so safety would be a very important consideration for the construction team. And we have um, throughout the process, um, and even. Um, uh, during the design process with our, our contractor and uh, before construction starts. We have um, a number of conversations, uh, many of whom, you know, focus on safety. So in this case, with uh, individuals and, and children around, uh, we would require that the property be um, properly secured with a fence. To ensure that no one, um, including kids were to come onto the site, especially while there's, you know, heavy equipment and foundation um, being um, dug and, and those types of things. Um. Alternatively as well, uh, we'll ensure that there's, uh, we'll coordinate with um, the, the school to ensure that there is, if there's a busier time of day. Uh, time of the week, what have you, we'll limit deliveries, heavy truck, uh, you know, entrance and exits, those kinds of things during that time. Uh, we usually can plan around those, those things pretty adequately. Um, I will say that we are in the process um, of building. Uh, it will be in the spring, uh, building on the same street adjacent to a school with uh, several hundred kids. And that's um, naturally something that, that we're working with our contractor, um, not only just because it's the right thing to do to ensure the safety of everyone in the neighborhood and the community. Um, but it becomes an expectation of our funders, obviously of our board of directors and others, because the last thing we would want. Is um, some sort of tragic situation uh, happening uh, while we're trying to, to do good in the community.
Thank you for that. That's all I have, Tony.
Yes, thank you. Uh, can I just uh, make reference to the document that was submitted, the revised document? Uh, under the section site plan review standards, I'm not sure what page it is, but it's uh, item number three. It says any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion. Or unsafe conditions on a road in the vicinity of the proposed project. And then the response is given and makes reference to an I T E manual also gives uh. Figures that indicate the uh, flowing, I'm assuming it's flowing traffic flow uh, uh, for the uh, complex. I know what it says, but I don't know what it means.
Sure, so uh, so I T E is just a manual, a guide for uh, international traffic engineers. Um, it's, has a bunch of tables. It comes in four or five volumes. It's about this high. And what we do is for every type of project in the United States, it has a database that says, based on the average, this is what the peak, the peak flow per traffic will be. So we use that as a guide along with our information from existing projects to estimate peak hourly trips. So usually in a peak hourly trip would be like me going to the store, getting a bag of chips and leaving the store. That's one, that's two trips actually. So um, once you get to about a hundred trips, that warrants uh, a traffic movement per minute. So we're just indicating here that based on this type of project, it is a low, a very low impact to traffic. A very small addition to traffic. Um. And we don't believe it aligns with any other peak flows uh, that you would have in this area. And that's based on statistical data across the nation. So when folks come in and do uh, Dunkin' Donuts, that's the manual they go to to see how many cars need to queue up in the. The drives are, they say we need fourteen or more, um, based on the size of the store. So that's, that's really our guide as engineers to view, um, to indicate whether we think there's going to be an impact there or not. As you indicated before, uh, the gentleman there that, uh, and Jason uh, mentioned, um, you're going to notice probably. The traffic, the larger vehicle for construction more than this project ever will. So that's why it's such a sensitive thing. That's why I feel well said with contractors. And have safety meetings and things like that. Talk about scheduling big vehicles, things where it's about kind of getting six in the morning, those kind of things. Making sure it doesn't align with school or any of those other high activity.
Yeah, and this is not obviously a, a, a work location, so it's not as if there's gonna be a.
Right.
Short timeline influx of people coming or going, but I just wanted to find out.
So.
What you can explain on that, uh, on that information.
Or a C store, convenience store or fuel station where people are constantly getting up to get a pack of gas, that would be. A bigger issue, a bigger number, can you see that? But it's pretty small. And that's, that's considered with what we've seen at uh, at Bangor. And actually at Bangor, there's two projects are side by side and share the same access drive to Grandview Avenue. And there's no issue there, so. Done.
Thank you on that. Uh, again, I'll refer to the planning board members. Do you have any questions? Because I, I want to just give an opportunity for any of the public present to ask a question pertinent to this project and what's been discussed tonight. Anybody from the public that, uh, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Okay. Uh, so I live at thirty-three Palm Street. I'm gonna be one that's uh, gonna be affected by this. And uh, first question I have is uh. I can't see it on this, but from the property line to the building, is that gonna be twenty feet? As I read it on this small detail?
Yeah, it says twenty feet plus or minus. It's actually twenty-two to building base.
Okay, I was just, just wondering. Uh, I don't want to take much time, uh, but this uh. This building's gonna interfere with three properties. The fourth one's the bank. They own the bank, so nobody's living there right now. So uh, me and Jessica and I talked to Gail and we agreed that we don't want this. We're looking, we're looking out our backyard the other night and just with the sunlight, there wasn't much sunlight. And you're talking about putting a thirty-six, forty-foot building up in front of our yard. So we're not gonna, the, the sunlight's not gonna hit. It's gonna damage the, our properties because we're gonna be in almost a dock. And plus the view. Like I said, I, I know a lot of you and I know that that place. Even when I was a kid, I don't know about Tom and John, but we played football there. We played uh, baseball and the kids do it. They, all the kids come around and they play baseball, they play football. It's a place where people that take their dogs, it, it's a, it's like a community land. And uh, the thing about it too is uh, you're talking about this plan. And I'm not saying that is inaccurate or whatever, but you go over there, you have time to go over there. And like I said, with the parking lot, the first parking lot they're showing is that through my neighbor Gail's. Would be in Gail's property line. And I can't see twenty cars lining up there. And uh. And uh, it's, it, she's got a two-car garage and she uh, it pretty much takes her land up that she's got. But I said, if you have opportunities to go by, and this is not even where they park for church, because they have a church there. They have dance there. They also have a couple of other things going on during the week. And Sunday and dance, that place is packed. Just like Charlie said, he, his grandchild, you go up there and people are parking on each end of the street. Plus they're parking in that parking lot. And even on Sunday, you go and that place packed. So the traffic that we're imagining is there. It, it's a heavy traffic area, even in Congress Street, that's heavy. You don't think it's heavy, but it, it's heavy. And another thing is, when I look at, I've gone to Bangor, I've gone to Lincoln, I've seen, and I've, I've even emailed Mr. Bird, we've had a couple of conversations. And, uh, nowhere do I see that they of the blocking property of the neighbors. And like I said, there's only three of us. There's only three of us there, so. It might be, wow, there's only three. That's only gonna bother three, but one residence, no matter what, has a right. I am sixty-three. I am retired. I've owned my land for twenty-two years. It's comfortable. I enjoy it. I enjoy the surroundings. It's an open space. I get plenty of sun in that. And even though you're looking at building a senior place, I'm a senior. I enjoy where I live. I enjoy my community. And you're putting a forty-foot building up and blocking that, blocking everything that I can see around. Well, no, it's not much of the building, but I can see when Sandy takes the kids out, they're dancing, they're having fun. You know, and my grandkids enjoy the pool. We got a pool. Jessica's put a lot of money into her backyard so she can have the comfort of relaxation. And like I said, I know you're looking at seniors. But I said, I spent my over forty-something years working and do I have, do I have to sit there and look at a big gigantic building? Yes. The town of Melanoke is growing. But you also, there's other places in this town that you go up. I know it's for the seniors trying to get close to here or close to there, but even some of these places in Bangor and that, they still have to go far further for the post office. They gotta go far for this. You know, and I just want you to consider, like I said, it's only three of us. I, I'm not against building senior places, but I'm against it right there. Because like I said, if you, if you go, you look at the place, it's smaller than what you're seeing here. You can see, just like snowballing, snowplowing, that is not that big of an area. It looks big, but it's not that big of an area, especially if you get two or three feet of snow every day. In Melanoke, no matter where you go, you can't, you can't figure it out. But like I said, I've talked to Gail, I've talked to Jessica, and they couldn't be here tonight. But I know this is just the planning part of it, but I just want you to know that we're, we're against, you know, as a senior, as a person that work, I figure I've got the right to live. And like I said, even if they put this building up, who's gonna buy the house that wants to sit back there and look at the big building? That's cutting your sunlight out, especially wintertime. Wintertime, you don't get much sun. So you're blocking the sunlight, you're blocking the view, you know, you, then the, then, uh, you've got more privacy. There's no, there's privacy there. Now we're gonna look out and like I said, Mr. Bird's thing about the windows that people can't, but they still can look out. And they're gonna look out and see my grandchildren, uh, in, in bathing suits and nesting. Especially this day and age, you can't trust anybody at any age, you know? So I'm looking out for my family and looking out for my property and looking for a good retirement. I wanna live long and see my grandkids and I wanna see, when I go in my backyard to sit on my deck and I have a soda or a coffee with friends that we're just looking at a building, you know? And you take a projector and no matter what they do, they're not gonna, they're gonna block the sun and everything. And I know it's the first stage and I just wanted to give my opinion. And, uh, I wrote you guys a letter because I don't have your things. So I want to pass this on so you can look at it for the next meeting or whatever. But I just ask you to take consideration of three residents, no matter what. It could be ten, twenty residents, but this way it's gonna be down to three. And we just, like I said, Gail's retired, I'm retired. You know, Jessica works, but she's put a lot of money into her backyard. A lot of money. And you, and like I said, I welcome any of you that stop by the neighborhood and look and come walk in the backyard, look when it's sunlight, when it's dark or whatever. But like I said, the other night, we sat there, me and Jessica and my wife, and you could see the sun. And I said, you know, that ain't gonna be there anymore if they put a building up. We won't be able to see it because it, projector, it's gonna cut everything off that goes to three neighbors. So I appreciate your time and I, I'd like to pass these out, you guys take home and just consider it. And like I said, I'm not against the project, but I said, there's plenty of places in Melanoke. We walk, like Lincoln, they got theirs right on the corner. We got a corner lot right there. If they want to put a three-story park up where, where they tore the new buried building down, there, there's a big space there. They could do it just like Lincoln. You're right downtown. There's no difference. You're not blocking anything off because it's all business. But this is residential and, and, uh, it's a di- different thing. And another thing, while I'm thinking of it, is this a commercial residence? Or is it a residential residence? Does anybody know?
Uh, this is the apartment complex, yes. Speak up, Randy.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the Roosted Avenue land, is that commercial or residential?
Uh, the, the location that this, uh, facility is to be constructed on is neighborhood commercial.
Okay, I just wanted to know that. But like I said, I appreciate your time. And like I said, I just wish you'd consider, you know, it's a small, small group of us. But like I said, if you wanna stop over and see it, like I said, John's been seeing it. He knows, knows the property because he lives across the street from us. Army's been there, you know, but I, 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 uh, opened my house for you guys to come stop by and see what I'm talking about. Because it's hard to imagine, but I put a couple of pictures in here that'll show you what the place is gonna look like once it's buildings up. It's compared to another place that somebody, somebody built a building. But I really appreciate your time and I just wanna pass these out if I can.
Yes, please, just come forward.
It's just for you to go, go home and something that you don't have to read right now. Did you all on? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Levitt, thank you, by the way, for your comments. And, uh, I don't want to dwell on this, but there will be another hearing on this.
Yeah.
And there, it'll be, uh, uh, meetings are open to the public, but this will be a public hearing that's gonna come forward later this month or depending on circumstances when people can, uh, can make another meeting.
Like I said, I, I had enough to hear about, talk to Mr. Bird and while we're emailing that to respond things. So I just wanna get a head start on this instead of have to take more time up later on.
All right, thank you. Uh, let me just, uh, in case it's not written into the record properly. Uh, uh, a written document was, uh, presented by, uh, Scott Levitt to the planning board, uh, concerning, uh, plans for housing on Spring Street. Uh, nothing, the document has not been read into the record, but essentially the discussion, uh, will be part of the record as we put minutes together at this meeting. Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, yes?
Randy.
Yes.
Just to clarify for my, um, the land is already, the land you're talking about is already in progress.
I agree so.
I know, so that we are, we have the property under contract to purchase. We have not, uh, we have not purchased the property yet. We have, uh, put down, um, sizable deposits though in order to, uh, to, to retain that right though.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? What I wanna do is we, uh, uh, I'm assuming there's no other, uh, figures from the public. And what about you, uh, uh, Randy or, uh, Mr. Bird? Uh, any comments, uh?
Yeah, my only, my only comment is that obviously, uh, we look for a location that is zoned properly for the beach that we're doing and there are best, uh, to meet all of the requirements and ordinance. Um, certainly, Bird comments and, um, try to anticipate some of the, the extra plantings and the fencing and things like that, but, um, I'll leave it at that.
Right, thank you. Uh, before I move on to what I wanted to discuss, uh, Evan Campbell is here for the CEO position. Uh, Evan, do you have anything on reviewing this project under the sections you have responsibility for? That's one twenty-five, one oh-two, one oh-three. Do you have anything to add, Jeff?
I don't have any concerns. I think we've pretty much covered everything, but I'm.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Churin.
Sorry.
Oh, uh, early, earlier I saw Barbara here who's on, on the screen. She, I think she had her hand raised. I'm not sure if she is looking to speak.
I did have a question. Um.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, um, I was wondering if there will be any, um.
Uh, yes, could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sure. I am, uh, Barbara Riddled Vorjak. I'm in, member of the AmeriCorps Age Friendly Committee, working on projects for aging in place in Melanoke. And in general, I'm very much in favor, of course, as we all are, for additional housing for seniors. I'm wondering whether this project has any income, um, stipulations? Is, is there gonna be a ceiling so that, um, people in, of lower incomes will have easy access and not be competing with wealthier people?
It's a good question. Yeah, sorry. So I did, um, I did gloss over it. So we predominantly build affordable housing. And so in this case, um, by affordable, we mean, um, individuals that make sixty percent or less of area median income. And so in this instance, one, uh, a single, uh, person household, which most of the time that, that is who we have in, in these types of properties, uh, would need to earn no more than thirty thousand dollars a year in order to be income eligible. Once they're over that, then, um, you know, unfortunately, they're in the middle category and they're sort of at the mercy of, of the market, uh, market rents. Um, from there, we have, uh, rent restrictions placed, um, on that, uh, on that rental. So we, um, otherwise may not receive any subsidy to buy down that rent. Um, but instead we receive the benefit upfront to be able to build a building. And then the promise that we have and the obligation that we have is that we'll keep the rents affordable to those individuals in those income brackets.
Is heating included?
So, uh, heating, electricity, um, internet, water sewer, uh, maintenance, plowing, all those kind, kinds of things, uh, cleaning of the common areas, uh, is included as well.
Okay. What do you, do you have an anticipation of what the rent will be?
Uh, I don't. Um, that is going to be set by main housing and by HUD, um, and, uh, it would be premature for me to say that right now exactly what it would be, only because, uh, every year in theory, uh, main housing and/or HUD, uh, do a market assessment to determine what those rents are by geographic area. And, um, I, I, if I set a number today, it may change, um, in the, what will be, could be almost two years between now and when we are open, able to open the building.
Right. One more question, if I may. Um, sometimes a person moving from a larger old house has to sell the house in order to, uh, simplify their life and, and include utilities. And so if they have a chunk of money that they want to put away for expenses or for leaving to grandchildren, will they be penalized if they sell a house to move into this rental affordable housing? Are they allowed to have some assets?
Yeah, uh, they are allowed to have assets. Um, the, the true answer to that question, um, can only really be answered by our property manager because, so we, um, and one thing I failed to mention earlier is that we will, um, contract the, the management of the property to a separate, uh, third-party nonprofit who, uh, called the Housing Foundation. They're based in Orenau. Uh, they do all of our other property management and, um, and they do an exceptional job. But, uh, their, their job is to, in part, um, not only to manage the, the, um, the sort of leases and those kinds of things, but there are a lot of rules and regulations around, you know, exactly, um, how do you define it? Do they, do they sell a house for one and a half million dollars? Well, that may be different than if they sell, you know, their home for a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars, right? Depending on what that, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna call it a windfall, but, um, there's a means test and there's a couple of other calculations that have to happen that, um, the level of expertise needed is, um, something that I'm not able to focus on. And so we, we engage them for those services. But, um, we have individuals all the time that, that do sell their home because they can't maintain it anymore. Um, and they, they are, they do have a nest egg that they're able to keep, but yet still afford the property. And there's a bunch of calculations that go into it to ensure though, um, that we aren't renting to millionaires or to individuals that otherwise don't need, um, the, the affordability, uh, restrictions. And in fact, um, not to belabor the point, but, um, we are, um, the, who we, you know, rent to, the income levels that we rent to are, um, highly, highly monitored and restricted because, um, not only do the investors who receive the tax credits for participating in our project, um, want to ensure that we're following the rules, but the IRS, main housing and others, um, look at those books and ensure that, uh, we're renting to the population and to the incomes that we say we're going to rent to.
And do they need to have it as a full-time primary residence?
Uh, uh, yes, yeah, it couldn't be something that in theory that they intend to use as their, you know, summer home or something, correct? Uh, but I would say that there probably wouldn't be much to preventing us for, say, if someone, if they had, uh, and could somehow afford to have an apartment in Florida or visit friends or something like that. That's, you know, we're not, we're not going to police their travel and activities, of course. Um, but, uh, more likely than not, based on the means test, it's not like someone could have second homes in other locations. Um, again, they, they would have to disclose all of that as a part of, of the application in order to determine that they are, they are income eligible. Um, and again, how that sort of spliced and diced is, is a bit more than, than my, than, it's above my pay grade.
Thank you.
All right, I, I thank you for the dialogue. It doesn't directly affect the concerns of the planning board, but it does affect the concerns of the community and it is applicable to the project, even though we're not judging it on that basis. If there's no other comments, and I don't want to cut people off, but if there are no other comments, what I want to do is we have to have a public hearing. This is a bu- public meeting, but there's gonna be a public hearing advertising the newspaper. And we will have input from the public, uh, maybe in addition to what came tonight, uh, is, uh, heard from tonight, but the earliest date that we can have a public hearing is November twenty-second. Uh, two days before Thanksgiving. What, what I am concerned about, especially not to dismiss you, Michelle, but I want to make sure we can get a quorum. How many people can make a meeting on the twenty-second?
How long is the meeting?
It would probably be ninety minutes the way it is tonight.
What is, what is, what is the resume on twenty-seven?
Uh, that's the earliest date we can meet. I'm sorry, that's, that's the earliest date we can meet. And we, we gotta have, uh, notices in the newspaper, which gives us a timeline going back within time. And so the twenty-second is the first date that we can actually meet the requirements of a public hearing. And as we have that, yeah, on the twenty-second, okay. That's two of us. I, I can do the twenty-second too, but if we're not gonna get a quorum, that's gonna put the tie box to this. If we're not gonna get a quorum, that's gonna put the tie box to this, so we can. I'm sorry. A quorum would be four, yes.
Is there six members or seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Uh, the next, the next date of a possible meeting is the twenty-ninth, in seven days after the twenty-second. So it would be obviously following Thanksgiving. All right, uh, the next date would be December sixth, I'm not trying to move it back, but that was the next date. The way I'm looking at the. Discussions around the table here, twenty-ninth might be the most flexible. And if that's the case, I'm gonna move forward with that date in mind for the public hearing. Which were mandated to ha- to have because of the uh size of this uh, uh, site review. Ten units or more is the breakpoint for apartment complex and we're well in excess of ten units. So I'm gonna go with the twenty-ninth, I'm sorry. Let letters were already sent out to this meeting. Uh, and it stipulates that this arrangement tonight and the public hearing would be more. I wouldn't say coordinated, we're coordinated, but uh, we were pushed on time to get a uh. Discussion of this project uh before the planning board and public and to have it. Uh, work through a public hearing as the first meeting was gonna be. Uh, somewhat of a problem, uh, and so we took this route, I took this route. To actually have this meeting tonight, bring it before the planning board and the public in attendance and then. Fill fill the requirements of a public hearing, which stipulated in the ordinance after the fact. So uh, I'll talk to uh. The the question was, are we gonna be sending out letters uh to to the public? And I can't give you a firm answer, but essentially the uh. The ordinance indicates that letters ought to be sent out, but they were sent out for this meeting. And that it's gonna be needed to be duplicated. I can't give you a good answer, I know it's stated in writing that it's stipulated, but. Like I said, we're having two hearings on this, uh, dealing with the site plan review. And the public hearing is that the second one, if everything was reversed, we would be. Less of a, in a bind on sending out letters, but I'll talk to Evan about that. Any other comments?
Is the intent for the meeting to be at six-thirty again?
Uh, that's typically what we've met and we typically met on a Tuesday. Just due to circumstances of individual uh. Individuals who serve on the board and might have routine meetings during the month on other days of the week and. Tuesday turn out to be workable, uh, but testing concrete, everything is flexible, but essentially that is uh.
Uh, yeah, I like to talk all the time, I I think there's six-thirty time in concrete, I think we need to make it earlier. Uh, I'd like to see where everybody, where where everybody else go, but I like to see the time. I don't like six-thirty.
Uh, input from other members of the planning board? Uh, let let me ask you, if we met at five-thirty, uh. Show hands, uh, compatible, non-compatible, uh. All right, let's, let's uh pursue the meeting on the twenty-ninth. And it'll be at five-thirty instead of six-thirty, just put it in your calendar and hopefully. Not hopefully, definitely wanna get a quorum and and more so, but that definitely wanna get a quorum. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Scott, Mr. Levitt uh asked us to visit his property, that compared to something. Just a simple walk, so we have a clear idea of what we, what he's asking of.
Uh, that might be. Hmm, a good way of approaching it, not a good way, a way of approaching it, but I I think. Taking a, a look at the properties individually might be less complex than trying to get a. A a group event to. Yeah, well, well. I'll read the letter, I haven't read it, but to to go as a, as a group, it might be problematic. A scheduling, yes.
I'm just suggesting following M M A. The M M A recommends that uh, planning board uh. Visit property together as as individuals, but how we wanna do it is. It may, and that's why I brought it up.
I, I would prefer otherwise. Yeah, I I just think that's gonna be uh another. Schedule to accommodate and if we try to stay with this level, it's twenty-ninth. That might be the endpoint of discussion if we vote on this thing at that time. So uh, and we've got Thanksgiving in there and people have indicated being out of town and things like that. So I'd advise that we not try to make this a group event and. Yeah, we'd advertise, advertise, I would advise people to visit properties that are ordering, ordering this. This uh location, just to get a feel for, for what's being discussed here. All right. Any other discussion? My uh format of this meeting is motion to adjourn.
Yes, if I could, please, to Tony?
Yes, please.
Yes, Patrick Moore from Melanocat, I'm here representing my family. Uh, my mom owns that property from the bank all the way to the lights on Central Street. I was just curious, Tony, you had recently or had you, just for my own records, did they change the zoning downtown? I actually don't know what K and M Motors has actually zoned, that would be my first question. My other question would be, I guess, to Mr. Bird, do you currently, is the one that is in Lincoln on the main street there, is that? One of your properties as well, so I guess it's kind of a, to get an answer from the both of yous. And I was curious, how come they didn't take a look at our property, because uh, if anybody's been downtown Lincoln lately, that's a beautiful, beautiful building. That sits on the uh, main street where you propose to put the building that you wanna put, you're gonna aggravate three neighbors, obviously, over there. And nobody's gonna see it, now the pictures you put up, that's an extremely beautiful building. It's a darn shame, it's gonna be on a back street and not seen, selfishly, I'd love to tell you my building. Uh, but if, you know, if you've got a deposit down, so be it, uh, I hope it flies. My only thing would be, I wish that you would keep it for the elderly and only the elderly, there's plenty of places for the disabled to go. Uh, in this town, Stern's High School was supposed to be for the elderly and it's a half elderly, half disabled, but that's here and there. Just those questions, Tony, if you could tell me what K and M Motors is zoned now? And uh, if you had changed the zoning recently, why was it done in and uh, and and for what reason? And also, uh, I guess that's it for me.
All right, thank you, let me address the uh, the zoning, uh, along Central Street, uh. Properties along Central Street are in downtown commercial.
Okay.
Not the zone we're talking about, we're talking about neighborhood commercial, which without the neighborhood. Terminology would be an R one zone, but we're not R one, neighborhood commercial. And the other part of the question.
Well, yeah, I had asked if you would change, I thought you had made some, made some changes where, like on the main street, that people couldn't uh. Have apartments there, anyway, may, maybe I'm wrong, I'm asking, I'm just asking the question, sir, uh.
No, no.
Nothing's been changed, nothing in the downtown area has been changed.
Uh, not in regard to what you're discussing, we haven't revised the uh downtown uh. Criteria, uh, uh, size of lots, setback requirements, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Was there another part of the question that's not funny?
Uh, no, I guess that's it.
I was keeping, I, my understanding is that. Evan may not be contacted after Thanksgiving, so should I send correspondence to Peter directly?
Uh, not to put Peter on the spot, but sending it to the Peter or the community, uh, it'll be a way of getting. Uh, communication.
I'd rather send it to one where it's done much earlier, the community really is on one day, so. You're welcome essentially, whomever you like, but uh. Okay, so you can maybe get these votes, I think.
All right, thank, thank you very much, it's a good one, I'll leave it.
I have one more question, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, normally in real estate, you can make a deposit contingent on approval of your. Construction, for example, is your deposit refundable if you do not get approval for this and could you seek another site in that case?
Um, so not in this case, or if the time has allowed, we've been, we've been at this for a while. Um, we've been under contract for a little while, um, it's taken some time to, to work through the design and and get the data that we need. But uh, so I I'd have to go back and to look at our agreement, but I don't believe it would be refundable. At the same time, one thing that I didn't stress tonight is that we would, we do have an earnest interest in um. In rehabilitating or redeveloping the brick building into a multi-use or multipurpose building as well. Um, so uh, that I think is is still a viable project, it's something we would want to to explore. Even if for some reason this project, um, weren't, uh, weren't permitted.
All right, well, thank you, any other comments, questions from individuals present at the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's been a motion to adjourn by Tom Malcolm and second by Michelle Anderson. Discussion on the motion, not hearing any, anybody opposed to adjourned. No hands raised, I take that as a means, that's an approval, but we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Moore, I just sent you a message uh to answer some of your questions, but uh, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.